Okay, we're gonna open the Board of Selectment meeting for June 26 at 6:33. We stand for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going, I can just remind everyone to please speak clearly and loudly into the microphones. We've had some complaints about not being able to hear people up here. I'll read the payroll warrant again. Motion to approve, well, actually, we don't have any resident comment, right?
Yeah.
So we'll do the warrants. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 17-51 in the amount of $167,011.78.
I'll second that.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Motion to approve deduction warrant number 17-49A in the amount of $32,520.8.
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion to approve bill warrant number 17-51 in the amount of $2,829,658.86.
I'll second that.
You have a second. Discussion, Denise, can you clarify what that includes, please?
Yep, sure. So 2.4 million is the short-term ban that we took out last year that we permanently financed at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So we had to pay that down. 250,000 was the light department, which left about 167,000 for town, water and sewer.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. All right, moving on, we have reapportment of Jan Vog as Library Director for a period of one month, July 1st, 2017 through July 31st, 2017. This information came in less than two hours ago before the scheduled meeting. The library requested that Jan Vog be appointed for one-month contract extension to expire on July 31st. I met with Jan on the 9th and told her that we need to have the information regarding her appointment with extensions, what date we needed to have it by, which was June 22nd. We received this two hours ago. I will allow this appointment to be added to the meeting tonight so that we don't interrupt the operations at the library in the future. This type of appointment needs to be submitted 48 hours ahead of time, and this would be the only exception I make for the library regarding this. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Jan Vog Library Director from July 1st, 2017 through July 31st, 2017.
You have a second?
I second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Bill?
In the second paragraph, last sentence, on the duration, "The five-year strategic long-range plan will be put on hold for the new director." Any idea how long it's gonna be put on hold and how many extensions we're gonna have to file in between now and then?
Do we have that information, Denise?
No, I don't. I think that was just part of her initial contract, that if she was here for the three years, that was one of the requirements to be completed. But since she's only staying the first year, I think it's no, that's why they're putting it on hold. But I haven't received any information about that or what that entails.
Yeah, as I stated, the information about reappointing her for an extension came over two hours ago. So, any further information regarding the project or her contract? We don't know.
So my suggestion would be to turn around and see if we can get the information on a deadline before the July 1st deadline. Try to get them to come in maybe a few weeks beforehand and let us know what's going on, if they have any, any kind of information on anyone coming in or what have you, or if it's gonna be extended again.
So...
Well, I think the appointment is separate. So the reapportment is...
Right, I understand that, but I'm saying, just conversation-wise, if we can get the information before, two hours before the deadline again.
Right, well, I guess what Bill O'Neill is asking is what happens after July 31st with his appointment, to reappoint her again for another month? Or she's gonna be moving, I know that.
They will, they will be submitting a, Crestwood will be submitting a name to be at our next meeting for interim director.
They've actually already done that. It's on your July 10th agenda. That came over today as well, so that's on your July 10th agenda.
Then we should be all set.
For an interim.
Would that interim expire June 30th next year?
No, the interim doesn't have an end date. It's until they hire a replacement, is how it was ordered.
So it's open.
Jan is here if we have any questions.
So would that appointment be open-ended?
Of me?
No. Yours is expiring July 31st if we appoint you, but the interim would be open-ended indefinitely?
The acting director would be appointed until such time as the permanent director is hired. And the permanent director ultimately would be the one who would take on a longer term.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we loved you so much while you were leaving.
Because life is finite.
I'm not Batman. I'm having trouble solving that riddle. Could you help me out?
I, I have very, very much enjoyed my time here, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to serve, and I really enjoy the work, and I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I'm very happy and pleased with the advances that we've made and the recoveries we've made. And I feel like the library's in a very good place now. And I, with all that said, I do have some other things in life that I'm hoping to do, and so this, that's, and I'd like to turn over the shift to another faculty.
Any further questions? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. No set, Tracy? All right, next up, we have the appointment of Taylor Devlin, Haville, Mass., to position of Library Assistant effective June 27th, 2017. The position is part-time, up to 18 and a half hours a week, at a starting pay rate of $12 an hour, subject to successful chore check. Is Taylor here? Anybody have, I don't think a motion for Taylor?
No. I'll make a motion. We appoint Taylor Devlin, Library Assistant effective June 27th, 2017. Part-time position, 18 and a half hours a week, at $12 an hour.
Do you get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Anyone get a chance to read over his information? I read it this afternoon.
Let me read it. I'm good with it.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Ed, please, any questions?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Chief Killen?
Yes.
You're up.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Chairman, for bringing us on the agenda tonight for a very big night for all of us here at the Groveland Police Department and the Crestwood Honorable Board. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to let us conduct this ceremony with friends and family and basically the public can see what's going on. This is, again, significant. As the new chief, I've done research and I've looked at how we conduct ourselves with the community. Community policing is probably the most important thing to me. I've embraced the 21st century policing model that back when President Obama was in office, I'd set up the task force, and they had six pillars, and the first pillar was building trust and legitimacy. The second was policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and the last one is officer wellness and safety. And the reason I bring this up is the team of officers that you're gonna see tonight, supervisors, all believe in that model. Community policing, officer wellness, serving and protecting the community of Groveland is really important to all of us. And the people I'm presenting tonight are top-notch. Groveland is one of the best, and that's what you're gonna see tonight. This isn't to take anything away from the officers that aren't here that have been on the team for a long time. Our dispatchers, our reserve officers, Sergeant Ryan, who's already in place, they're all tremendous. So, but tonight I wanted it to be about these officers who've been on the force for quite a while and worked hard and are overwhelmingly deserving of these appointments that I request of you tonight. The first two are our new full-time officers, Adam Sandborn and Chris Lattalian. What's impressive about these two young men are that they self-sponsored themselves to the full-time police academy. Adam, he finished up just in the last year. He was recognized with an award at his academy. And Chris Lattalian is at the top of his class. I keep getting accolade about his performance. I've actually had two departments come to me and say, "We put that guy on full-time," and finally I had to say, "He has to leave alone. He's coming to Groveland." So I'm so proud to have those two young men. It's just done a great job for us. Being a reserve is not easy in Groveland. They work many hours for little compensation, and they both stood up throughout the course. Adam's been here for almost three years, and Chris Lattalian's been here two years. They're both now full-time trained. They have degrees, they're educated, they have experience and training. So, again, I think we're very fortunate to have them joining our team.
Are they here tonight?
Yes.
They're right behind me.
Hey, guys.
Good job.
Who's who?
Adam Sandborn.
Chris Lattalian, sir.
Thank you.
Emily's not here tonight. She's gonna be a full-time dispatcher. Another one, I can't say nothing about. She's with the U.S. Coast Guard. She's getting on as a reserve officer, but tonight, again, with your appointment, she'd be a full-time dispatcher. She just, she just came on board recently. And then the next one is Dwight McDonald, who's been a sergeant since 2008. Dwight's been on the force for 28 years. He came from Washington. He's well-established from Washington. He actually has, who's, and Brian, they were retired officers from Washington. Dwight's been well thought of in the profession. Dwight was the dear officer, I believe, for 13 years in Groveland. That takes a lot of work, and it's probably more than they recommend, but he stuck it out, did a great job, and really established himself in the community, raised his family here. And Dwight really is the Groveland PD. He does it all. There's not one finger there he probably hasn't had his fingerprints on, and he's tremendous. He's gonna be the one that helps me out the most, so I'm excited about his promotion, too. And then there's Heather Riley. What I'm most proud of is the historic part of this. She's one of my favorites. She's unbelievable. She does a job where it's, it's basically all males, and she gets in there and does the job better than most of the guys do, it's hard to believe. She's, her presence, her kindness, her compassion, I can't say enough about Heather. She's been a detective with us for two years. She comes with 10 years of police experience. Another one that's got a college degree. The training experience that she presents is invaluable to us. Her most recent case was solved in the bank robbery in Groveland. Her and Detective Patrol, you know, we actually went to New Hampshire and brought the bad guy back to Groveland. She's got many cases that have just been very successful. So I'm proud to be a part of the first female supervisor coming to the Groveland Police Department. And the last one of my list is Eric Gorski, 20 years on the force. Another one, highly educated, trained, experienced, long overdue. Eric's somebody I just think a lot about. I lived back when I raised my family in Groveland. We started out, my wife tells stories of how Eric interacted with the kids when they were just little, little kids. And then I can think of stories of my friend, Don Cudwell, the chief, who called me up one night and said, "I just gotta tell you, Eric Gorski represents you very well, your department." I said, "Why? Why'd he say that? I knew that, by the way, but why'd you say that?" And he'd come to the fireworks in Groveland, and he said that Eric helped him cross the street, and he said, "Just the way he made him feel coming to Groveland for a family night of..." And I can tell those stories over and over. I can tell them from 5 to 95. Eric can interact with everybody, and he really does represent us well, and I'm most excited about him moving up to this next step. And I'm proud of what he's done. He's taken on a lot of administrative duties the last few years, and he's never complained, he's never asked for anything. And it's just, again, it's long overdue, and I think you'll see him continue to do great things for the town of Groveland and the Police Department. He's another lifelong member of the community, so he is Groveland. And I look at him as a typical small-town police officer, but let me tell you, when it's time to do police work, too, he'll solve the crimes and do what he has to do. But he's out there hitting those community issues, you know, the stuff, the quality of life stuff that Eric's out. He'll see him out there. He's out there all the time, just talking and doing his job. So, again, I can't say nothing about the whole department, but his group tonight is, I think I'm more excited about it than maybe they are. This is huge, so I wanna thank them.
You've gotta grin. Everyone else is kinda like, you know, serious.
Yes.
I gotta tell you, Jeff, whether I am driving through town or running my route, you know, out sweating, every officer I've ever passed or come in contact with has been professional, friendly, and just willing to do anything that they, that needs to get done. It's been awesome to see this department grow. I didn't realize we had this many officers. To see this department grow into something like this, into a community like this, it's really great. I, I love being, being stopped when I'm running or on the road, or I see Heather up by my street, or Dwight drive by. It's great.
I'm glad you said when you were running.
I do that from time to time. So how, how do we wanna handle this? Did you wanna do the swearing-in all at once? Is that what we wanna do, or, and then the pinning individually, or?
So you should make the appointments, and then me and you swear them in.
Yeah.
And are you doing the pinning?
We're gonna do pinning, and I talked to Mrs. Brody, and she thought maybe if you, however you'd wanna do it as a board, but she thought maybe you could do the two patrolmen, lieutenant, and the two sergeants as a swearing-in with a specific to that position.
Okay.
And then, if you don't mind, if we could just take a minute to line them up and do a pinning with their family, who also wanna thank the family and friends for coming on.
So are we gonna do Officer Sandborn and Lattalian first?
You could appoint them all now.
Okay.
And then you could call them up in their groups.
Okay. All right, let's do that. Let's, can we get a motion to appoint the officers as described by Jeff? Or do you wanna read each one? Do we have to read each one? Does someone wanna read each one as a, as a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that, make a motion that we appoint Officer Dwight P. McDonald to Lieutenant.
Oh, just use this.
Okay.
We have the list.
Fine. We appoint Adam Sandborn of Bradford to the position of full-time patrol officer effective July 1st, 2017. Appointment of Christopher Lattalian of Georgetown to position of full-time patrol officer effective July 1st, 2017. To appoint Emily Stanton of Haville to the position of full-time dispatcher effective July 1st, 2017. To authorize the promotion and appointment of Dwight P. McDonald to the position of lieutenant of Groveland Police Department effective July 1st, 2017. To approve the promotional appointment of Heather Riley to the position of sergeant of the Groveland Police Department effective July 1st, 2017. And to approve the promotional appointment of Eric Gorski to the position of sergeant of Groveland Police Department effective July 1st, 2017. I almost said Nolan.
Couple more years.
You know, habits are tough to break.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So you, you make the order, whatever you want.
So Mrs. Brody's gonna swear them in right now?
Okay.
That's okay?
Yeah, and then you're gonna swear them in, then pin them, or swear them in, swear them in, then pin them?
We'll swear them in, and then we'll pin them all at once.
Perfect.
That's okay, so do the two of them at once.
She's really charging.
No, I'm not.
And then let them loosen those bad guys out there in the street.
Over here, please. Do you wanna raise your right hand? I'm going to say just your first names, and let me just repeat, okay? I, Adam, and Christopher, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Commonwealth Massachusetts, and that all faithfully discharge the duties for the office of full-time policeman during the term for which I have been appointed. So help me God.
You're welcome.
I, Dwight, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Commonwealth Massachusetts, and that all faithfully discharge the duties for the office of lieutenant during the term for which I have been appointed. So help me God. Congratulations.
Heather? Heather next?
Heather and...
Eric.
Oh, Heather and Eric.
And I, Heather. I, Eric, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that all faithfully discharge the duties for the office of sergeant during the term for which I have been appointed. So help me God. Congratulations.
So we can...
Do it over here.
Sergeant wants to stand over there, we'll still get the pinning.
Gotta say, it's a handsome groove.
So if you wanna have a pen, quickly, come on up now, and we'll go ahead and do it all at once. I don't know, you guys have other business.
It's all right.
I'm kidding.
Thank you.
Jeff, don't with the media. Don't with the media.
Okay. Don't with the media. Turn it to your own blood, this, Jeff.
Is that the end of yours?
I'm done. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
They're gonna come back.
Congratulations.
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 Look on the board.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. That was exciting.
This is all on TV, right?
Yeah.
You bad guys. Get a good look at these guys. Don't mess in Groveland. Ah, these guys will put you away.
If you guys, you guys wanna take a minute, if you wanna stay, that's fine. If you wanna leave now, that's fine, but we'll give you guys a minute to clear out if you wanna leave. Well, I thought it was being nice. I thought people would wanna stay, but no.
That was really nice.
Yeah.
Well, they deserve recognition.
He's coming in. He'll be in.
Guys, I'm still trying to get the fifth grade. Can't find enough guys. Killing me. Can't find enough kids for the fifth grade.
Yeah, please.
Who is the auditors?
He's in the hall.
Who is?
Mike, he's telling him. He didn't wanna take up the seat.
He went from a full house to a no-house. Down in front. Down in front.
Are you ready for me right now?
We are.
Okay.
So next up, we have Michael Nelligan from Powers &amp; Sullivan to discuss fiscal year '16 audit and findings.
I'm just gonna have to hold on so we get a microphone.
I don't need a microphone, unless you want me to have one. Is it gonna, is it gonna record?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just take him up here and put him on the table.
They've always been here unless someone moved them for... You know, Tracy, unless they went over for the memorial ceremony and didn't...
Tracy, just turn mine around. Put it around the head of the table.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, I'll just put one, one for him, and then one up between the two of you.
Yeah, that's fine.
The two of you.
All set. What do you got for us?
I'll introduce myself for the record. My name's Michael Nelligan, and I'm partnered with Powers &amp; Sullivan. I've been responsible for the audit of the town for a number of years now.
Mm-hmm.
And I trust you've all gotten copies of the audit reports?
Yes.
We issued two reports. We issued a setup audit and financial statements with a report on internal control in the back, and we issued a management letter. And you've all seen the reports, and do you like me to take you through them all?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you don't have to put a ton of time into it, but an overview of each would be good.
I think the numbers for the town have been improved over the last four or five years. Pretty steady.
Okay.
You've got pretty good reserves built up now in the general fund, stabilization fund. Stabilization fund ended the year at $742,000 last year, and I understand you've put another 300 in it this year. Did you spend anything out of it?
No.
So, there were, 10 years ago, you had virtually no reserves.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you had positive changes in all of your areas this year, and you had positive change in the statement of net position, which is entity-wide full and total financial statements. You had positive change in the business-type activities, you had positive change in the fund-based statements, and everything, I think, is looking good. And there's been a lot of improvements going on. I'll just quickly go through a few points on the audit. We issued clean opinions on the financial statements. We do have some material weaknesses mentioned in the management letter. The light plant audit is done by another set of auditors. They're at 1231 year-end. We bring those audited financial statements from the other auditor into the town's report. We do not do the audit of the light plant. The financial statements are fully GAAP compliant. In 2015, the town implemented GASB68, which brought the pension liability on the books.
Mm-hmm.
And 2016, the new GASB was a fair, fair value measurements, which changed some disclosures in the cash area, cash investments. With those GASBs being implemented, you're fully GAAP compliant. The next one to go is this year, there's an OPEB, the first of two OPEB standards coming out. The first one will require no disclosure changes, only. The second one next year, in 2018, will require you to bring on the liability for the entire OPEB plant. That liability, in the latest valuation, grew from about... We issued clean opinions on the financial statements. We do have some material weaknesses mentioned in the management letter. The light plant audit is done by another set of auditors. They're at 1231 year-end. We bring those audit and financial statements from the other auditor into the town's report. We do not do the audit of the light plant. The financial statements are fully GAAP compliant. In 2015, the town implemented GASB sixty-eight, which brought the pension liability on the books. And 2016, the new GASB was fair value measurements, which changed some disclosures in the cash area, cash investments. With those GASBs being implemented, you're fully GAAP compliant. The next one to go is this year, there is an OPEB, the first of two OPEB standards coming out. The first one will require no disclosure changes only. The second one next year, in 2018, will require you bring on the liability for the entire OPEB plan. That liability in the latest valuation grew from about 3.6 million to a little over seven. It has to do with some change in the actuarial, change in the number of retirees that are receiving benefits, and to some change in the actuarial standards and mortality tables. So the last time you had a valuation done was 2013. So here we are four years later and that liability has grown from 3.6 roughly to a little over seven. That's using a discount rate of 4% because you're not funding it. Yeah, the $10,000 that you put in doesn't allow you to get to a lower discount rate. You have to be funding the ARC in order to be able to use the six and a half percent discount rate. If you were able to do that, I think the number was 216,000, you could put in extra every year. You'd get to a 6.5% discount rate and that would lower your liability to four and a half million, probably seven point four. Not a big deal because the actuary goes in and explains in the valuation and in the cover letter that he sends you that the funding, your choice to fund or not, doesn't change the overall liability at all. It just changes the timing of how it gets recorded on the books. So it'll lower your liability. At the end of the day, it'll lower the amount because of the discount rate and the funding that you're putting in. So at the end of thirty years, you'll get to the same place. It'll just look a little better on the financials throughout those years.
It's a balance sheet item.
Pretty much, yeah. And the changes in OPEB and pension liabilities really reflect what your contributions are, what your expenses are of the plan. The additional liabilities to bring on those actuarial amounts, going to defer inflows and outflows, I often notice those on your financial statements. Those are new elements that came out a couple of years ago. So like if you have, say in your pension plan, you're expecting a 7.75% return and you only get 3% return, there's a big investment loss there. That goes into a deferred outflow on the balance sheet as opposed to a direct into expense because that variance is going to be smoothed out through the actuarial process over a five to seven year period. So that's what those deferred inflows and deferred outflows are all about. So the town is fully GAAP compliant. I was just going over the audit. We scheduled the audit last year and the same pretty much this year. We start our phase one planning in June or July each year. And then we've scheduled like the last week of November, the first week of December to do the audit. So we're doing along that same schedule. And we actually started today. We had people out here today that are working. And things are going well. Kind of excited about some of the changes that are coming down the pipe over the next few weeks. Some of the VADAR training is good for the town. The purchase of a couple of new modules for cash application and so forth should make a big change in the way the accountant is able to reconcile cash, which has been one of the big problems, cash receivables. I should clean that up a lot, take away the need for all the manual journal entries. So I'm kind of excited about seeing the results of that. And then you're bringing on a new town accountant for the week of July. Excited. I don't know her, but I know she's worked in Raleigh for a number of years and we audit Raleigh. Good things have been reported on that front, so excited about that too. So we've got full cooperation on the audit and things went smoothly enough. You know, it was, we have to make some adjustments every year. We expect those hopefully those will go away and make our job a little easier, but otherwise we're, we know where to look and the audits went pretty smoothly.
Is there anything that was lingering the previous years or is there any issues that you have concerns over? I mean, you're saying everything is pretty good and reasonable.
Mainly in the area of the management where we have those four material weaknesses.
Okay.
And what concerns me along those lines is the reconciliations that weren't being made on a timely basis. And those are what cause misstatements to be made potentially in the financial statements. And if you're not reconciling regularly, when you go back to try and do it three months later, six months later, a year later, it's hard to find those things. And it makes everybody's life more difficult not having those reconciliations done on a timely basis. And you know, that's sort of a thing that accountants talk about all the time is reconciliations, but that's really what keeps things moving. And you really shouldn't move on to the next month until you get this one closed out and reconciled because it just makes things messy. But I don't see anything that is problematic or still an error after the audit is finished. I think everything works its way out over the process, through the process. So you had a $761,000 increase in your general fund. You have a fund balance in the general fund of two point, almost 2.9 million dollars. That is 19% of general fund expenditures. The rating agency want that to be anywhere from eight to 15%. So you're well over that. Even without the stabilization money being in there, you're still at 14%? I remember times when you were at 3%, 2% or very, very close to 0%. So I think you made very positive changes in that area. You tick on some new debt this year. You borrowed 2.4 million dollars for bond anticipation notes for the police dispatch, ladder truck and water mains. And if you'd like, I'll just quickly take you through the statements. And I promise I'll only be a couple of minutes because I... Our audit opinion is on page one and two. It's a clean opinion. It gets longer and longer every year, but that's not because of anything we do. It's just the AICPA keeps rewriting the standards and this used to be a two paragraph report. Anything more than two paragraphs, it wasn't good. Now we're at like nine or 12, nine or 10, something like that. Management's discussion and analysis follows that. And this gives you a financial highlights at the entity-wide level and for the business type. And it compares this year with last year. I'll point out on page six that you've got a unrestricted deficit in your net position caused by OPEB and pension liabilities coming on. It's 2.1, almost 2.130. That number is going to jump up to about 7 million dollars when the OPEB comes in, negative 7 million when the OPEB comes in altogether. But otherwise, you had a change in net position of 391,000 dollars for the year, which given the OPEB and the pension amounts, that's pretty good. A lot of times, if you have an increase in your fund-based statements, what happens from the fund base to the entity-wide is things get recorded like OPEB expenses, pension expenses, depreciation expense, all those expenses for long-term liabilities that are not included in the fund-based statements. And those change in net position oftentimes goes negative. Well, it didn't this year. So that means you had a good, healthy change in your fund-based statements. You had positive changes in two out of the three enterprise funds. The sewer fund went down by about 236,000 because of a little revenue dip and also some expense, higher expenses for the infiltration system. Next takes you to the analysis of the government major funds, talks about the general fund, the community preservation fund, the fire ladder truck major fund, that capital project. It goes in and talks about the general fund budgetary highlights where you had 735,000 dollars excess revenues over what you budgeted and 283,000 dollar lower expenses expenditures than what you budgeted. So you had a good, positive changes in your budgetary statements. I already talked about the new debt. You spent that money on, mainly on roadway improvements, the police dispatch equipment, the Washington Park playground and the additions to the electric plant. Page fifteen, I'm just going to point out two numbers on there. I highlighted the other post-employment benefit number, which is about two-thirds of the way down on the page. Again, that million, that number was 1,568. It's going to jump up to 1,963 at the end of seventeen and then to 7.1 million in eighteen. The pension liability is at 8.1 million dollars. That is not going to change much from year to year, once you've got that liability now on the books. We already talked about those pages. So when I talk about entity-wide financials and fund-based financials, if you really want to understand what the differences are between those two, on page nineteen and on page twenty-one, there's two reconciliations. One is a reconciliation of the differences in the two balance sheets. And the other one is a change, is a reconciliation of the two differences in the P and L statements. So I always advise clients to get used to looking at those two reconciliation pages, nineteen and twenty-one. It kind of helps you understand the financials a little better and what the differences are between the two levels of reporting. So I'll take you through on page thirty. All the notes are virtually the same as last year, except on page thirty, there's mention of fair value measurements. That's the new GASB seventy-two statement that came out last year. And then there's another note in the cash investment section that maps out all of those changes in those investments. That is also new on page thirty-nine. We talked about the capital asset activity. The short-term financing is on page forty-four. That's that 2.4 million dollars worth of new bond anticipation notes that you borrowed. The pension plan notes on page fifty are five pages long. You'll see those same notes for OPEB going forward. So this year, we have to update all those notes for OPEB that we did last year for the pension plan. They're virtually identical to each other. There's a couple of little changes between the two, but for the most part, they're going to look very similar in format and length. And then that'll be next year, that'll be a combination of this year and next year. And then on page sixty, there's a schedule of revenues and expenses and changes in fund balance for your budget. And I already talked about the positive revenue that you collected versus what you budgeted and the lower expenses. So that's pretty much the report on the financial statements.
So bottom line is we're doing pretty well?
I think so, yeah.
I know the last couple of years we put money away for the OPEB, but how can we close that gap?
Put more money. So right now...
Do we have a line on it for that now? I know we did.
Yes, so for two years now, so last year we did 85,000 and fiscal eighteen, we have 85,000.
Okay. So that gets you about one-third of the way to where the actuary would want you to. To get to the next discount, break in the discount, you got to fund that ARC.
So maybe this coming year we'll have to fund more? Try to fund more?
Well, I think so. One of the good things is we've sort of reached the level where we need to be with our stabilization. So we put 300,000 in and then in fiscal eighteen, it's another 70, 80,000, I think. I forget the number exactly. So yes, so maybe now instead of focusing on that, we put money into OPEB.
I don't know if you all got this little summary from your odyssey.
No, I haven't recorded that all.
This is a nice little summary of how the OPEB changed because of the new requirements and also what they would recommend for you to fund to get to the next discount, get up to a higher discount, which would lower the liability. So I'd encourage you to get ahold of this and read that. It will help you understand the whole OPEB scenario as it sits right now and what's changed from what it was before to what it is now. And it's pretty, the changes have been pretty dynamic over the last few years. So I'd encourage you to get ahold of that if you want. Any other questions on this?
So with regard to the material weaknesses, are they, so there's four material weaknesses. Is there any delineation as to which are the most important to address? Are they ranked at all?
No, they're not ranked, but I would say, like I mentioned earlier, the reconciliations of cash and receivables are the most important ones. And the other one that we've noticed over the years, and this was cleaned up significantly this year, but it was still a little bit of a problem. The town accountant had gotten into a habit of making journal entries without documenting what they were for. And that's really what started these material weaknesses way back in 2007 and eight, was that entries were being made with no support. So we would come in at the end and say, what is this entry for? And there'd be no explanation. And it was made nine months earlier. The recollection of what it was for was often, I don't know. So that's pretty much cleaned itself up. As I know Denise is signing off on the journal entries and reviewing them all. But the reconciliation process and the documentation of journal entries, I think, were the two most important. And if you'd, just give me a second. The definition of material weakness is, in our opinion, and it really, a deficiency in internal control exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent or detect and correct misstatements on a timely basis. A material weakness is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the financial statements will not be detected, prevented, detected or corrected on a timely basis. So we're not saying that there are material misstatements in the financial statements. There are just the possibility that there could be. So and we don't audit for, you know, we're going to audit all the big areas and... But I mean, could something slip through? Sure. I mean, some of the things that we catch each year are transfers that don't get recorded. So you vote a transfer and it never happens. So and when I say it never happens, I don't mean that categorically. It's, there's a chance that it might not get posted. So we've found those kinds of things in the past. We've found transfers where one side of the transfer was made and not the other. So one fund got the benefit of a transfer in and the other fund didn't get the charge for the transfer out, those kinds of things.
And then my next question is with respect to the other matters previously reported.
Yep.
So there are several, and I'm just wondering if the fundist director were to prioritize among those, would you give any guidance around what you think would be the most important to address?
I, you know, I'm an auditor, so I will say the fraud risk assessment is probably the priority because that puts the responsibility back on the department. It's to look at their department and say, where am I handling cash or where could assets of the town be misappropriated? Do I have no-show employees? Are people putting in for overtime that doesn't exist? Do I have cash laying around that's not being turned over to the treasurer on a timely basis? Where I've talked to, I've actually had opportunities to sit in front of like all the department heads of certain clients and talk to them about this comment. And to tell you the truth, people get kind of excited about that aspect of doing this and just looking at your department and saying, all right, what are all of the critical things that I should be monitoring here to make sure that there's no fraud or abuse in my department? And it's not that hard. They could just make a quick list. And if you got every department to do that and monitor it and maybe write a little report back to the selectmen every year saying, this is, these are the key things in my department that I'm monitoring and this is what I did. I think that's...
Easy fix.
Easy fix. And then along those lines, we have a comment on page thirteen about documentation of internal controls. This is not a high priority for the town right now because it's mainly meant to be addressed by school departments where they're getting federal grants. The Department of Education, DESI, put out a, published an internal control model and required all of the cities and towns to buy a copy of that template and implement it. And they're only giving them a one-year window to implement the thing. I went to a meeting last, a week ago Friday and somebody from the DOR got up and spoke. And the DOR, in addition to DESI, is going to start requiring all cities and towns to implement those COSO standards. So that comment, right now, is an informational comment, the way we presented it. It'll be a real comment next year if nothing is done. But we're not going to press the matter here so much as we are in, because you don't have a school, you know, really, you don't, you know, the school is a regional school, so you're really not... the school is a regional school, so you're really not handling a lot of federal grants directly within the town. But, this comment is not going to go away. And once the DOR publishes something, it's going to become even more important. And I think, I would hope and expect to see these material weakness comments to go away. And then, you know, we're left with a management letter that's not really that bad. It's, there's a couple of points in here that need to be addressed, but- Had that same presentation by the DOR, they were talking about management letters, and they expect auditors to be reporting on things and getting in front of the selectmen and explaining what those issues are, regardless of how important they really are. But, you know, our duty is to, is to look around, kick the tires, and to report back on what we see. And some auditors don't do that, as, you know, sometimes the, you know, matter gets brought up, management says, I don't really care about that one, and the, and the comment goes away. And the DOR made it pretty clear. They want to see those comments recurring in the management letters. They want to make sure that those matters are communicated to, to the proper governance boards and so forth, and-
Just the, comparing, I compare the last three audit reports. This is my third year here, so the third one that I've received.
Yep.
And it seems that this one shows that we're doing things better than had been done in the past. It shows some promise.
I would agree with that, yes. For sure. I mean, things like building up the stabilization reserve, using long-term debt for projects. A lot of years ago, the town always borrowed anticipation notes and paid them off. And that keeps your interest rate low, but it also takes all of your cash away. So, using long-term debt, when, when you see it appropriate, you know, when you have a good reason to do that, as opposed to short-term debt, is a good policy, I think. And that's what the DOR would encourage you to do. Take those projects and spread them out over a period of time and not let yourselves run low on, on your cash reserves. Because you never know, you might have to fund OPEB with it or something like that, so.
What a project. Bill, anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. I guess from general gist of what I've heard is, we're getting better. What would you say is some of the key factors attributable to that success we've had over the last couple of years? What changes did we make?
Your new finance director, for one, that's probably the most important. She's got a lot more experience and hands-on capabilities than you had before, and I think that's going to make a big difference. And I, and I think your new town accountant is going to make a big difference as well. And getting the training and the new modules in Vadar and cleaning up that computer system will be a good opportunity to see even more change, good positive changes going forward. But, I think, you know, the reserve policies, the personnel, just generally, things like that are what, what makes the town stronger.
Yeah, on the section, the management letter.
Yep.
We have other matters previously reported. Can you tell us how many years we've previously reported on things like police detail, bank accounts and activities, and tax and title court?
Most, most all of these have been going on for four or five years.
Four to five years. So, in other words, it's time to clean some of this stuff up, huh?
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Did you refer to those as being old by months, not years before? Couple of months, six months, you want to go back and make sure that those are reconciled?
Well, you're talking about reconciliations. I'm talking about other matters that have been reported in prior management letters to this board, that it continue to be addressed year after year, and now we're saying-
Yeah, what I was referring to before was the reconciliation process.
Facilitate some kind of change, that the majority of these would go away, save you the paper from commenting on them year after year after year.
Yeah.
So, if I make two should be gone, the police details. Last year, we bought software, so hopefully, that will not be an issue. They can adequately provide reconciliations and statements of who's outstanding, how much is outstanding, which we did not have in the past. And the tax title. The tax title was, we've all been through that a few years ago when we had the place properties in tax title. That's all been cleaned up. Right now, everything up through fiscal sixteen is in tax title. So, hopefully, that, those two comments will go away.
So, the only other lingering comments that have been going on for years are bank account activities, fraud risk assessment, you say was-
The bank account activities is almost all resolved as well.
Almost?
Almost.
Almost. Glad you said it, not me. And fraud risk assessment, but that's relatively new. How many years has that been continuing?
That's been out there for about five years now.
Five years as well?
Yep. It's, it's not one that, it's lingering for a lot of our clients, to tell you the truth, because it's, it seems like a monumental task to do when you read that comment. But, like, as I said, if you just push it back to the department heads and ask them to do a little risk assessment of their own department, list out the four or five things that they're going to monitor to minimize those risks, and then ask them to report back to you on an annual basis, that solves the problem, I think, and-
Easy fix?
Yeah, can be.
You've just got to get those people, those departments to comply, right?
Yes, that's, that's typically the problem.
Shouldn't be.
No, you're right. I mean, in a business, it's not, you know.
Business is not, because those people would be looking for other employment, right?
Right.
Taxpayers deserve the same kind of service from their government as most people would expect from their local convenience store, grocery store.
Sure.
Auto mechanic, right? No different?
Nope.
Grapple. Grapple thinking.
I don't think so.
Well, I don't think so either.
I know, I know how hard I work for my money, and I can't imagine anybody out there in a taxpaying audience in Groveland works any less hard for their money than I do. And I think the least they can expect is a level of competence and service in their government that should be unquestionable.
Agreed.
And if I don't get that from the services and the businesses I patronize, I don't patronize them very often, or anymore. I'd take my voting dollar and I'd vote at another store.
Any other questions? You all set?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
So, next up, we have the police annual appointments. Thank you.
You too.
You too, thank you.
Do we have the police annual appointments?
Yep.
What do we have for that? Oh, we got to go through that whole list.
I thought it was a repeat of the last one.
I thought it was too.
No, so the highlighted ones are the ones you've appointed separately. Those are the ones with the asterisk. I don't know if it came out highlighted on your copy. The double, so lieutenant, two of the sergeants, and then the two full-time officers and the full-time dispatcher are the ones you've already appointed. So, you can choose, I think in the past, I want to say the names were read and then you appointed them all as a whole, if you'd like to do that, or there's another method you'd like to do.
Whatever the board wants to do. So, if someone want to make a motion, either individually or as a group? We can do it either way?
Make a motion that we do it as a group?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Do we need to read off the names as a group?
I think in one-
Individually, you have to read off the names, but you don't have to go and make a motion for each one?
Yeah, I would encourage you to at least, you know, read the names and the respective title for each category.
Any problem with that? Ed, any problem with that?
No.
All right, so Bill, do you want to read them off? Or Bill, do you want to?
Sure.
Bill, do you?
I'll give it a shot. To make the following appointments, full-time patrol officers, Steven Patron, could somebody correct me two of them?
Yes, but can you actually, Sergeant Eric Ryan needs to be appointed.
My bad, I'm sorry. You're right, correct. Sergeant Eric Ryan, full-time patrol officer, Steven Patron, Joshua Sondoni, Christopher Erso. Reserve patrol officers, Edwin Fournier, Paul Pierce, Matthew Lehman, Robert Richards, Jr., Michael Fornese. Did you give it now?
Yep.
Okay. Jacob Wallace, Daniel Richmond, Jr., Steven Sergeant, Joel Enriquez. Joseph McMaines, Emily Stanton, we already did.
No, she needs to be appointed as a reserve.
Okay, we'll add Emily Stanton. Steven DeHulu.
Yep.
We've got full-time dispatcher, lockup keeper, Cynthia Batista, Edwin Fournier, Steven Sergeant. We have reserve dispatcher, lockup keeper, Caitlin Trudell.
Caitlin.
Caitlin Trudell, Deborah Munoz, Jacob Wallace, Daniel Richmond, Jr., Joseph McMaines, Amanda Muir, animal control officer, Daniel Richmond, Jr., Stevens, and assistant Stevens Sergeant, harbor master, Michael Vetz, dock keeper, Robert Rimondi, Nicholas-
Talius.
Talius, and constable Edward Reed and Carlos Usack.
All right, do we get a second?
Can I make a second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right, I guess we'll do the same thing for the summer program appointments.
I make a motion, we take these for the sake of expediency en masse as well.
Sounds good. You want to read them?
You have a second?
You need a second? No, I wouldn't need a second. Go ahead.
I'll read them. Jeremy Binding, Matthew Castenway, Ashley Cummings, Ryan DiPeola, Cassandra Donovan, Nicola Elardo, Brianna Favor, William Gilmore, Caitlin Grafton, I think they've, Jake Green, Kieranan Haley, Annie Kilation?
Putting you to a test tonight, aren't we?
Yes. Allison LaHeef, Madison Lisiska, Ally Legals, Brandon Mills, Carolyn Maudlish, Jeffrey Maudlish, Amelia O'Brien, and Ryan Anaro. Oh, Jesus. Andrea Pound, Eric Scott, and Cameron Walbach.
I'll second those.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? And then, we have the annual appointments.
Yes, so I, let me just write this down. So, the annual appointments, they're color-coded just for reference sake. The yellow is what was vacant. Blue is either didn't hear back or heard back from someone that did not wish to seek reappointment. The two from the cultural council, Mass Cultural called and said that under the state requirements, you can only serve one six-year term. You cannot serve two in a row, so they have to at least take a year off. So, Lawrence and Susan, under the cultural council, cannot be reappointed for their requirements. Historical commission, Pat Den, stormwater management, Thomas Denoue, zoning board of appeals, Jason Norman, and two finance board members, Andrew Wilds and Ashlon Daniels. We did not hear back from. And I'll be honest, Pat Den, I had reached out to a few other people. We just didn't get a response back. The people that have replied are yeses. We have not heard back from the chair of the board of health in our response to see if she had any problems with reappointing the health agent and the health nurse. I think that's it.
So, Denise, just a question about, so on the rep committee, are we only seeing here what's represented for? Are there people that were reappointed that don't need to be reappointed? I didn't see Mike Houghton's name.
Correct, so he was not up. So, the rep commission-
Okay, so those are only the people that were up and only-
No, actually, no, he was, you reappointed him the last time. So, Mike Houghton-
These are the only being-
These are the people that were left. I thought it was easy to clean up this and just have the people that remain. So, yes, Mike, they are annual, and he was appointed at your last meeting.
So, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we at least start out with the ones that didn't reply and not reappoint. As far as the ones that cannot be, the six-year term ones and the ones that couldn't be reached or didn't respond, I would start by saying we don't reappoint those.
And I would recommend, you know, not on the cultural council, but on the others, you know, they're still vacant, so if they come forward and decide that they would like to still serve, you could certainly reappoint them if the time comes, or if someone else steps up in the meantime.
The two on the cultural council that they cannot be reappointed because of a six-year term, are they aware of that?
Honestly, I don't know. Like I said, Mass Cultural called me clear out of the blue and told me that they had some concerns on the way our cultural council was set up and that they could not be reappointed. So, I don't know if they have been informed, if Mass Cultural got in touch with them. I really don't know. But I'm assuming that's why we didn't hear back from them. Maybe they are aware of it, knew they couldn't be reappointed.
So, we have a motion to not approve, don't you say, Bill? Not to approve the ones who can't be reapproved, or reappointed?
I haven't responded.
Do we get a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes, these, just looking at those that, no reply. Could we reach out to them, maybe for the next meeting, by letter? I know we've done it by email, but we do it by letter, so that we know that they have received it. And maybe in a short period of time, some of their email addresses have changed. They haven't updated here at the town hall. But I do see, you know, at least a couple of them that have addresses listed, so I don't see why we couldn't send them a letter and just let them know they're up for reappointment and that they indicate or that they would like to be reappointed. And that would be, just to go down the list, there would be-
Four?
Two of the stormwater management, one of the zoning board of appeals, and at least one on the finance.
Yeah, I would say Andy, why, Andy's been on that board forever, right?
But, he didn't come to any meetings this entire year.
I know it's a conflict between his teaching-
Correct.
And then, when they moved the nights.
So, they, I do know that the chair and the vice chair, or the secretary of finance, reached out to him several times and asked him if he could attend meetings, and he could not. So, I do know that the finance board is actively pursuing other interested parties to participate on that board, so.
Have we-
He's a valuable member, and he actually, didn't he show up at the town meeting?
He came to town meeting, yes.
Do we have to have a friendly amendment to send the letters out, or?
No, but I would maybe recommend not, not reappointing people. I would just maybe leave their names off, or I don't know that you want to get into a practice of just not.
So, don't even acknowledge it, basically?
Correct, they're vacant. I mean, their terms expire June thirtieth, so they're done unless we reappoint them at a future meeting. I don't think you want to actually not reappoint them.
We'll discover we can't, according to the Mass Cultural Council.
Correct. So, I don't even think you need that motion personally, but, and then if we're just going to wait-
Do it another way?
If we're just going to wait for another meeting, like I said, if they come forward, if we reach out by letter.
Have we, have we tried by email and any other? How have we tried getting ahold of you? I thought last meeting, we discussed that we're going to try getting ahold of them.
Yeah, emails. Well, right, and no emails bounce back.
None of them bounce back? Well, I guess we'll try a letter then.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, so you're going to, you withdrawing that?
I'll withdraw.
So, those five, I will-
Send a certified letter?
Actually, six, I'll see if we can find them. Oh, no, Marguerite Foley, so you can, so her for the cultural council, she is actually interested. She sent a letter, so. And the same thing with William Carter. He is interested, and he's under stormwater management. So, I have five that we will continue to try to reach out to.
All right, so does someone want to make a motion to appoint either the people that responded yes, or?
Why don't we go down the list? And just read off the names? Want to do it that way? And then, we can vote on them all together.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine, go ahead, that's what we did last time.
Nobody, uh, Nobody Affordable Housing Committee, we've got, uh, four vacancies. Uh, Board of Registries, Jennifer Close, uh, for the Town Clerk, Rhonda Baducci, for the Town Clerk, Susan D'Angelo, for the Board of Registries, for the Town Clerk. Cultural Council, well, Cable TV Advisory Board, three, uh, vacancies there.
You missed Lori LeBlanc.
That's right.
Um, there's only three on the Board of Registries.
There was a new sheet handed out today.
Uh, we were, we were looking for the Town Clerk's recommendation on that. Cultural Council-
Yeah, but if you look at the-
We've got a new amendment.
Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-one. Possible, as possible, the members of the Board shall represent two of the leading political parties. As defined in Section one of Chapter fifty, provided that city or town clerk need not enroll in a political party, and provided further that in no case shall an appointment be made, has to cause a Board to have more than two members, including the city or town clerk, so that means that there's no requirement to have three registers. Both political parties, Republican and Democrats, need to be represented. Uh, that includes whatever the Town Clerk signifies for as, and with no majority, so.
So you, what are the parties represented right now?
Well, that's just it, we don't know.
Did we ask?
I did not ask.
We, we had, we had asked at the, at the last meeting, uh, for, uh, we were looking for recommendations from the Town Clerk for the Board of Registries, and also a couple of people from the, um, for the Health Department for their recommendation. And, uh, and I think that, uh, uh, it was always thought, if you, uh, the, the people in the Board of Health are working for the, uh, I'm sorry, the people for the Board of Health, the health agent, the health nurse, are, are working for the members of the Board of Health, and they should, uh, the, the Board of Health should, uh, say who the, who they want, uh, as, as well as the Board of Registries are working for the Town Clerk, and, uh, their supervisors should tell us who, who they want. Um, and, and use as a scenario, uh, we just appointed, uh, several people to the Police Department tonight at the recommendation of the Police Chief. Uh, when we, uh, when we, uh, vote on, uh, personnel for the Highway Department, we go on the Highway Superintendent's, uh, recommendation because they work for him. And, uh, and, and other, uh, the, the Water Department, we, we appointed somebody to the Water Department. We're going on the, on the recommendation of the Water Superintendent and the, uh, uh, the, the Water Board. So, uh, I, I think that we, we should look at, at the supervisors as, as being, uh, who they want to work, to work for them, because they, they have to work, uh, with these people, and I, I think that, uh, that that should weigh, uh, weigh heavily.
Bill, did you talk to Lori?
Yes.
Is there any background on that? Does she still wanna be, uh?
She's still very interested, and, um, I, I guess, you know, I just wanna ask the question, and, is this, is this performance-based? Did she not do a good job? I mean, she was one of the first people I met here when I moved to Groveland, and I find her to be a person of incredibly high integrity. Always see her at the polls, didn't, you know, I'm just wondering if this is performance-related, or if there's some other motive, um, behind this?
I'm sorry, I'm giving you time to start.
I'm just wondering, could I ask a question?
I guess point of order is that if it is performance-based, that I, I think the, uh, Town Clerk, and if, if there was going to be a discussion, that would be an executive session issue. I don't think we could discuss performance in a group meeting, if there was concerns about performance.
How about a simple reason why, then?
I don't know.
So I would, I would-
So, do we take a vote on her separately, I guess?
Well, to go back to Ed's point, Ed's point was that the Police Chief came in and spoke on behalf of his people and all the departments come in and speak on behalf of their people. Do we have anything from the Town Clerk stating why these people are the people she wanted? Are we just?
Just the letter, just the email.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did get a letter from her, uh, dated June twelfth. Appointments, and three people that she chose along with, uh, the two constables coming up.
And my point is, did we get any explanation why they, why she was favoring three over the one that was there or anything? I, I, all in front of, for fairness, I understand it should be in an executive session, but if, and we can't talk about it publicly, but is there an issue that's?
So I don't think the question was asked. So I think if it's something that we wanna pursue, we should ask that question.
Mm-hmm.
And if it needs to be in executive session, you know, accordingly. But I don't, I'm not aware that that question was asked.
I guess I'm asking it now.
So maybe we, we put these on hold until we get them?
The registers on hold?
Yeah.
Well, we're not having a vote anytime soon, right, so it's not like, we need them tomorrow.
No. All right, so let's put the, um, the Board of Registries on hold and continue with the other ones that are on here.
But that being said, how do we go about getting the Town Clerk to answer our answers? Do we have to have an executive session with her?
Executive session.
No, I mean, I think, you know, you as the Chairman could ask her, and if it is performance-based, then it comes to another level. But if she has a specific reason, then I think you could, she could either come in here or provide an email response.
Okay.
All I'm saying is, in our fairness to the person that's there, at least she may wanna know why she wasn't gonna be chosen.
Reappointed?
Yeah, in our fairness to her, I mean.
Oh, and she's been there forever.
Well, in, in, in past, it's been mentioned, they were appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and we, for some, for no reason at all, we don't have to appoint somebody, these are, uh, uh, these are annual appointments, they, they don't need an explanation, as, as we, we learned, uh, a, a year ago, when it came up for, uh, for appointment, they are, they, they serve at the will of the Board of Selectmen, and if you choose not to appoint somebody, they, they, they don't need a hearing, they're not required to have a hearing because they're appointed, they're appointed positions.
Now, I think Selectmen O'Neill is asking the question of why she wasn't selected.
Correct.
So that's the, that's the question that's being presented is, not from Lori's point of view, not that I know of, um, but why, Bill is wondering why she was not picked to be reappointed.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it, I know she's, um, been a longstanding, uh, member of that Board, and it's just odd that, um, I know she, uh, she's, um, you know, commented to me that she, uh, enjoys it, and she would still, um, uh, want to be, uh, reappointed, so.
All right, so let's, um, let's hold off on those registers and go down to the other ones, get those taken care of.
So can I just make a suggestion about that? I think if we're asking the Chair to, to directly address that, I think the Board should vote on that.
Vote on what?
If you're going to speak directly with the Town Clerk, because it's acting outside of the rule of the Chair.
Is it act, acting outside the rule of the Chair?
Yeah, I mean, you could do it at the Board's approval, speaking to him.
All right, so I'll abstain? No, yeah, not abstain?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that Mike follow up with the Town Clerk, just to try and get some information about the basis, and if it's appropriate to share at the meeting, do so accordingly, and if not, decide whether it needs to be brought before executive session.
And, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll second that with a, with a question. How do you determine whether it rises to the level of an executive session or not?
The guidelines say that it has to do with personal character, there's, there's some guidance?
Mm-hmm.
Personal information, basically.
Yeah, performance, pretty much outlined in the book.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so I'll talk with the Town Clerk.
And I think someone mentioned, it might have been you, Mike, um, I don't kno- I mean, maybe there is, but in the, like, the law I read, there isn't a requirement to only have three registrars, so perhaps you could have a fourth and have a backup if need be. I don't know that there's any requirement, the Town Clerk would probably know that, but, um, I don't know that there is, so that might be a question to add as well.
Okay.
That way there, if someone can't make it, you could have a person that would fill in.
Yeah, same, somebody who is sick for an extended period of time and not be able to show up.
As long as there's not more than two of each party on the board.
No, no.
And that's another thing we should probably, I guess we can talk about it.
Well, I have to ask, because we know we define as, on their register.
In that same vein, there's no, there's no law requiring us to follow the recommendations of the department heads, right? That's just a recommendation?
Correct, the law says the Board of Selectmen, correct.
Okay, so do we wanna continue with, uh, the appointments that we have in place or in front of us?
Okay, um, we have three vacancies on the Cable, uh, TV Advisory Board.
Yes, so if I just may interrupt you there, um, Ed, so John McCormsky Jr., I believe his name is Junior, um, said he was not seeking reappointment, he actually said he resigned many months ago. Um, so I don't know, he's out of the country on a work assignment, so he is not planning to.
Have I, have we received a resignation?
Yeah, and I don't know who he actually resigned to, but he told me he resigned several months ago, so that's why he is not seeking. So Tracy, just to comment further, I did email you back, so you don't have a form of support? We need to find you some board members.
Um, Cultural Council, uh, Margaret Foley, uh, six-year term. Uh, Election Constable, Dave Tuttle, and Ed Reed, annual appointment. We'll skip over the, uh, the, uh, two people from the Board of Health, looking for a recommendation from the Board of Health Commission. The Mirmac Valley Planning Commission, uh, we have a vacancy. Open Space and Trails Committee, two vacancies. Recreation Committee, uh, we have, uh, Bethany Silva and Pam Blackery. We have, uh, one, two, four vacancies on the Recreation, uh, three auxiliary members and one regular member. Stormwater Management, we have one, uh, we have one vacancy, and, uh, we're looking to appoint William Carter, an annual appointment. The Board of Appeals, we have, uh, three vacancies for alternate, possibly one for regular member. Planning Board, alternate, one vacancy. Finance Board, two, just like a vacancy on one-year term for alternate members, and we, uh, no, no reply from two regular members, so we don't know.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Second, uh, further discussion, uh, for William Carter, we don't have any kind of status?
Yes, he wanted to.
He did?
He was seeking reappointment, yes.
Good.
I think I just left off the yes.
Okay, just double check, all right, so any further discussion?
Health Agent and Health Nurse, the Health Nurse. We still gonna try and, and what are we gonna do?
Well, I would recommend, I mean, they are actual employees, so in order for them to continue working, I would recommend you reappoint them, we haven't heard otherwise from the Board of Health. They're both longtime employees at this point, so I don't know how you wanna handle it, they're actual employees that would need to continue working as of Friday.
Uh, I'll add those, uh, Health Agent, Deborah Ketchin, and Health Nurse, Anita Wright.
Is there any reason why we haven't received any information?
We reached out to the Chairman of the Board of Health and just haven't heard back from them.
How long ago?
Uh, Cassandra did it, and she checked today and hasn't, I don't know when it was, it was sometime last week after the last meeting.
Did they work down the hall?
No, they both wanna seek reappointment, but the Board's elected and they're not here all the time, so we reached out. So I've talked to both of them, and they would like to be reappointed.
Okay, so the amendment, or the motion will include Deborah Ketchin and Anita Wright?
Yeah, they're probably, they're, as a amendment.
Okay, so we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I'm sorry, who's second is that?
Uh, Bill did. Chairman Dunn. Uh, Selectmen Dunn.
Yeah.
Put this over in the money.
My bad.
All right, moving on to votes of the Board, we have the minutes from May thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Everybody get a chance to review those?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the date of the two thousand seventeen meeting.
I'll, I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? We have the executive session minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen.
I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen.
We get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? And we have the adoption of designer selection procedures for Town of Groveland public building projects.
So if I may comment on that?
Sure.
Um, so this is as we are starting the process for the design study for the Council on Aging, the money that was appropriated at town meeting, um, and going through the new requirements of Mass General Law, the Board of Selectmen are required to have a designer selection procedure in place, which I could not find that we had one. So these are primarily from the state's guidelines, so I took their guidelines. Um, I did give it to the Council on Aging Building Committee, they've reviewed them. So in order to get that process going and to put out an RFQ for that design study, this needs to be in place and posted, so. If anyone has any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, it was primarily right from the state's requirements.
Can we get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the design.
Designer selection procedure.
Designer selection procedure.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
What's this gonna run as far as the money?
So this, the procedure itself is nothing, it just sets out the terms of, um.
More paperwork.
Right, so what happens is, the state is very, um, conscious of public funds and public buildings being built. So they have specific requirements that the person who is designing public buildings is qualified, um, has the proper background, resumes, et cetera, the proper principles in place to do the work. So this just sort of protects us of who we can hire to do that design study. Um, town meeting appropriated thirty-five thousand to do the study. So when we put out the RFQ, which hopefully will be in the next week or two, um, then that will have a maximum amount negotiated at thirty-five thousand.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Moving on to old business, I have a couple of things. Questions arise about, uh, the quality of the water certain times throughout the day and week and year. Um, if you have problems with your water, do not just post it to Facebook, please contact the Water Department. Water Department does not monitor Facebook, so please call them if you have dirty water, so they can log it, they can monitor it, and they can maybe send someone over to check on it. Posting it to Facebook, while it does inform people, does not inform the Water Department that handles water issues. Also, I wanted to thank and congratulate Jeremy Frederick on his Eagle Scale project. Uh, I meant to do this at the last meeting, I went over to the library a few weeks ago, uh, to meet with Jan, and we actually sat in that new, uh, reading center, and it was, uh, very comfortable and very relaxing, so job well done there. The other item I wanted to bring up was, I had an email from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It seems that they are down members. There's an issue that is at hand on the July nineteenth meeting where at least one of the members, I think the Chair has to recuse herself because she's in the butter, uh, to the issue at hand. I cannot do that meeting because I am a butter to the issue at hand. So the ZBA has asked one of us to fill in for the July nineteenth meeting. I would ask Bill Dunn, since you were on the ZBA, if you can make that, that'll, that'll help them up, July nineteenth.
What's the issue then?
It's a Wednesday.
Do you remember what, uh, the item was? I mean, there was a couple of things that I got from them, but.
I don't, that specific one, I don't think they actually put what the issue was.
No, I know Dan just said they couldn't do.
Correct, and I know the other matter, um, Kathy Delisle emailed you all, but that was a separate one because she's not the chairman. So I don't know what the matter at hand was, and where you're in the butter, I don't know what it could be, actually.
Yeah. So Casey's in the butter, and I live right around the corner from Casey, so we're both a butter, so we can't sit on it. And Bill, since you had been on the ZBA before.
Yeah, no one else wants to do it. I did, the night, I think I'm good the nineteenth.
Have you chatted with wedding stuff?
I know, that's what I was wondering.
You get married again?
I don't know, my daughter gets married on the twenty-sixth, but I think, I'll check and get back to you, I think it's good.
So does the Board have to appoint him for one?
Yeah, so I would add him to the July tenth agenda if, if that's, you know, if he, so Bill, let me know, and I'll put you on.
Yeah, I'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, if not, then we'll have to ask somebody else.
If anyone else is willing, yeah.
I would, yeah, is anybody else willing? I mean, where Bill was on it before, I thought that it was a logical choice, I would've done it, but I can't. No, okay.
Let's hope that Bill can do it.
If not, we'll have to move on to somebody else.
Yeah, so if so, I'll, so as soon as you let me know, I'll.
I'll find out tomorrow.
And if not, we can look for somebody for that.
The other thing I had was an update on the Bagnell Field, I went over there this weekend, grass is growing, looks good. Just for an update, because I know there were some questions about what had been done. The week of town meeting, we had seeding, the week after, we had starter fertilizer applied, the week of June 5th, we had sliced seeded both ways, and then June 18th, we had fertilization applied again. I have some of their receipts from that, so that project is actually working. Like I said, I was down there the other day, compared to what it looked like five, 10 years ago, it looks pretty good, the grass is growing in, I think in a couple of weeks when we're ready to have the, people come in and talk about that project on July 10th, that we'll have the grass probably cut and some more weeding come down, actually some more weeding taking place and be able to actually present it to the town as a near-finished project. Let's see, the other thing I had was, at the last selectman meeting, there were serious allegations made against Bill Dunn by other members of the board. Because of this, we were forced to engage with town council to render an opinion of the facts at a cost to the town. And the findings read, this is from KP Law, June 16th. Dear Mr. Dunn, you have requested an opinion pursuant to General Law Chapter 268A subsection 22, Chapter 268A is a commonwealth conflict of interest law, the law, and Chapter 22 entitles the municipal office official or employee to an opinion of town councils regarding the law's applicability to particular situation. According to the information you provided, you are an elected member of the Groveland Board of Selectmen, you are the owner of William F. Dunn Landscaping and Contracting and landscaping business located in Groveland. It is my understanding that in 2016, the town solicited bids for a large landscaping project on the grounds of the Bagnell Elementary School, but when the bids were opened, the cost was prohibitively high, Dunn Landscaping did not submit a bid. In order to see the necessary work got done, you volunteered to act as a consultant and to offer your professional expertise to the town at no cost. It is my further understanding that the following efforts, under your advice and/or supervision, have been made on the project. One, a group of work-released prisoners have performed work at the site. Two, town DPW employees have worked off-hours at the site. Three, at times, some employees of Dunn Landscaping have worked at the site. Four, you have donated the use of Dunn landscaping equipment as well as certain materials such as mulch and wood chips. You informed me that neither you, Dunn Landscaping, nor any Dunn landscaping employees have requested or received any form of compensation from the town or for the above work or equipment. You have always intended it to be a donation to the town. The town has incurred no expenses with regard to any of the above described work. In addition, you did not participate as a selectman in organizing any of the above work on the project, and all coordination was handled by the Finance Director. It has been suggested that the above facts may violate Chapter 268A, and you have requested my opinion. In my opinion, the above facts do not create a violation of Chapter 268A or even an appearance of a conflict of interest under Section 23B 3 of the law. As a selectman, you are a municipal employee, subject to the prohibitions and restrictions of the law. The law is triggered by various interactions with the town, including acting as an agent for a third party, acting in one's official capacity on the particular matter in which he, his immediate family, or his business or employer has a financial interest, or having a financial interest in a conflict, contract with the town. Based upon the facts regarding your assistance on the Bagnell School landscaping project, however, all of which has been donated and not involving any contract, nothing you have done in connection with the project suggests any violation of the law, and no disclosure is required. Section 23B 3 referred to as the appearing section can be violated when municipal employees act in a manner which would cause the reasonable person having a knowledge of relevant circumstances to conclude that any person can improperly influence or unduly enjoy a favor in the performance of his official duties. A violation of the, is avoided if the official has first filed a written disclosure with his appointing authority or the town clerk or elected officials. In this case, however, the detail of above, you have taken no, no action in your capacity as a selectman with regard to the donated work being done at Bagnell School, so provisions of Chapter 23B 3 do not even apply, in my opinion. In summary, my opinion that based upon the facts detailed above, nothing you have done, nothing you have been involved with concerning the Bagnell School landscaping project has violated Chapter 268A. In accordance with General Law Chapter 268A, Section 22 and 930 CMR 1.033, I am required to file, file copies of this opinion with town clerk and the State Ethics Commission. The commissions will then have 30 days in which to issue its own determination, either concurring or disagreeing with this opinion. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, very truly yours, Brian Riley.
Can I make a?
Oh, I'm not done.
Okay, sorry.
The finding from council speaks for itself, and there is no logical way to come to an alternative conclusion. Bill has done nothing wrong, and his efforts and donations have been for the betterment of Groveland. This board is divided, and really it mirrors national political landscape in this country, from town levels to state levels and up to the federal level. People have either forgotten how to work together, or they have decided that working together is not in their own best interest, or possibly, it doesn't sit well with a small group of people they are protecting. Regardless of the reasons, it needs to stop. We don't have to like each other, but we do have to work together. We can disagree, we can debate, however, whatever we do, we will do it with professionalism and respect. This board is a governing authority in this town. This board sits the tone, sets the tone for how the rest of the town should conduct themselves. Remember that. Every member of this board should ask themselves why they wanted to be a selectman to begin with. Was it to discredit or disrespect another board member? Was it to promote their own personal agenda? Was it to protect a small group of disruptive angry people in town? Or was it a reason to truly focus on what's best for Groveland and to move the town forward? I hope it's the latter. There hasn't been a team in the history of the world that has been successful with division eating away at it from the inside. We have all seen what's happening on the national level of government. Let us be the place where people can point to as an example of successful collaboration. Bill, as a Chair, I apologize for the false accusations that were made against you last week, and any personal damage that might have been caused. You want to say something?
Thank you, no, I think you pretty much said it in a nutshell, I don't want to dwell on it. I will say, as the past Chairman of this board, what I did have is I did not have any personal agendas, what I had was goals. Goals which I set as a Chairman of the board and worked with my board members to achieve, and I'm proud of achieving those goals. That being said, you talked about, you know, discrediting, what have you, I don't sit here and try and divide a board. The night that we, we regrouped, I thought I did what I needed to do to try and make this board what we needed to do to move forward. Simply in closing, I would like to challenge this board to work together to get goals and run this town like a business, and that's all I have to say.
Anybody else have anything for old business?
I would like to add to that.
Yep.
But I think for future reference, we can probably avoid some of these issues, I think we make the written disclosure, and if somebody's acting in a manner that could be construed or questioned, they can simply state, I'm not acting in my capacity as Board of Selectmen. By writing the, by filing the form and by stating that you're not acting in your capacity, in your capacity as a Board of Selectmen member, you avoid any concerns or questions regarding that.
Anybody else for old business? Bill?
Old business.
I have one thing I have.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask how the land sales are coming?
Yeah, they're coming. It's just, so that second, the first, I think the first RFP that we did, the purchase and sale has been sent to the DeHulus. The second one, I haven't quite finished yet, and we have another, just on another matter, which I've spoken to Mike about, we were working with council on doing this land swap deals for the town meeting approved land swap up on Wood Street, and we have to follow back up with council on some questions before it comes back to this, or before it comes to this board, so that's what we are.
No, so the, the land sale that we put out to bid?
Yep.
That's not, you haven't heard back on the bid yet?
No, so the second one hasn't gone up to.
It hasn't gone up to bid.
The first one, we're waiting on the purchase and sale to come back.
So on the second one, when will we be able to get that out to bid?
I don't know, soon.
You're just too busy to do it?
Yeah, it's the end of the year.
Okay.
It's just a crazy time of year.
All right.
Old business.
Go ahead, I'm just asking.
This goes back to a few meetings ago when we talked about the, the physical, the physical definitions, borders of the town clerk's office and things that had transpired during the absence, and there was, I guess, a, we saw an opinion from KP Law, and I'd just like to read that, the reply. Good afternoon, Denise, you have requested an opinion about the right of the selectmen to enter the office of the town clerk by breaking the lock if necessary. You have advised that the current town clerk was hospitalized with an unknown discharge date, that she kept key her office locked, and that to date, the selectmen have not been able to get a copy of the key from her, and that it may not be possible for them to do so. You have also advised that urgent town business, the upcoming town meeting on Monday, April 24, 2017, and the upcoming town elections on Monday, May 1st, 2017, require immediate access to the town clerk's office, to the forms, ballots, absentee ballots, and other papers kept there. For the reasons more fully stated below, it is my opinion that all real estate of the town, with the exception not relevant here, is by law under the control of the selectmen, and accordingly, they may use whatever reasonable measures might be necessary to gain access to room on town property, which has been locked, for which they are unable to get the key. This would specifically include breaking and replacing the lock. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 3, I quote, "All real estate of the town shall be under the control of the selectmen, except as otherwise provided in General Law, Chapter 30, Section 9 pertaining to the veteran space and armories." See Board of Selectmen versus Lindsay, 44 Mass 502, 506, 2005, Tuckamandale versus Moynihan, 282 Mass 562, 1933. The statute encases me, and in my opinion, if control of property for which the selectmen are responsible is wrongfully taken away from or denied to the selectmen, they have the power to undertake reasonable measures to recover the property for public purposes for which it is intended. In this case, the town clerk's office was locked, and the key was not delivered to the selectmen, who needed access to the clerk's office for public purpose for preparing the upcoming town meeting on April 24th and the upcoming town election on May 1st. In my opinion, therefore, it is within the reasonable exercise of the selectmen's powers to force a lock to the town clerk's office, to replace it with a new lock. I trust that this will be of assistance. It was to me. So has it been determined, just going on that similar conversation, what might be privy in that office that the folks on this board who were duly elected by the taxpayers and voters of this community, we not privy to, but it seems that from time to time, everybody and their mother can gain access to that office and be privy to, possibly be privy to that information. Have we determined what that might be? What sort of type of information? Is there a list that we can look at and say, when we go there, we have to shut our eyes? Just try and get clarification, I guess this really clarifies that the personal property does belong under the control of the selectmen and not any other, with any other person or entity. Now I'm just wondering about what might be inside that was so, I guess, important in that, matter of national security that we might be barred from, from seeing it.
I can't answer that, I have no idea. I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what's in there, I have never been behind that desk. So are you asking to bring this up as a topic again, or are you asking for clarification? Are you asking for an itemized list?
Yeah, I think it's all of the above, I mean, it came up before, and I don't want this to be a, a problem again. Business of the town and the taxpayers need to be conducted in a reasonably expeditious manner whenever possible. Things happen, I get it. An adequate Plan B needs to be put in place, and the, as I tried to state before, while the position is elected, I understand that, the, I would believe, and I think this really hits at home, all the property shall be under the control of the selectmen, all real estate of the town. So I'm just wondering if that's been, if we reconcile that issue somewhat. For example, do, does our Finance Director, who would be our key liaison for this board, have a key to that office? Should it be required that she need to get in there? For example, if a fire were to break out in that office, do we run? Do we have a key to extinguish the fire? Do we have, can we gain access without taking an axe to the door?
In our last meeting, one of our last meetings, you were supposed to be notified when that town clerk was out, what have you, has that all been taken care of? I mean, if.
She has my contact information.
So she'll get ahold of you when she's out?
Out for more than a day or two.
Okay.
So not out every time something comes up.
So where did the, how we, so she has the keys, so that's?
As far as, no, I, I don't have a key.
Okay.
So I think a plan was put in place, it was an agenda item, and a plan was developed. So I think there's a difference between what that letter addresses and generally what the statutory role is of the town clerk. So the statutory role of the town clerk is the keeper of the records. So I think that's the reason, that that tends to be an autonomous space. I would agree that in an emergency situation, but I guess I, I think that if you look to what the statute, statutory guidance provides, it's that the keeper of the record is, is an elected position that is meant to be autonomous, and there's meant to be, I think if we solicited, you know, from other town clerks, I think we would find that what's happening here is not different than in other towns, in terms of the town clerk having autonomy over those files and records.
So that being said, in an emergency situation, could the key be put at the police station with the dispatcher in case they need to get in there for a reason, that we wouldn't have to break down the door, or we wouldn't have to go through all this?
Well, I think the, the status was that Rhonda was gonna have a backup key.
Right.
Okay.
But is it possible or conceivable that the town clerk is out and Rhonda's out of town or something, and something happens there? I mean, it's conceivable, so I don't know.
If you, if the town clerk was out for one day, one day, she doesn't have to call you.
No.
So if they needed to get in that one day she was out, why wouldn't we just have a key someplace that they could get in if they had to do business?
So how, so my question would be, how is that any, do we make sure that we have a key to, for instance, the police chief's office? Do we have a key to Denise's office if we need to get in? Do we, is that, does that apply to every town office? That somebody has access to a key immediately if they need to access that office?
Do you have access to every other office in here?
In town hall, yes.
And there's always someone at the police station?
Yes.
That'd be.
And, and I will say, two people have keys to my office, and now we're all the keys to all the confidential files are here.
So if those two people weren't around though, then they wouldn't be access to your office, there's a backup plan.
Right, if myself and my assistant and my assistant's assistant were all out, which wouldn't happen unless there was some catastrophic emergency, we don't schedule people to be out at the same.
We don't schedule people to be out at the same time.
So you do have access to everywhere but one particular part of this building?
Yes. Again, I would suggest that the board look at what the statutory authority is of the town clerk and review that, and then revisit this issue after you've reviewed that to see if you still feel the same way.
I guess that's probably the, the crux of everything, is what the actual review states, states versus the authority for the town clerk versus the authority for the Board of Selectmen.
If the town clerk has it in her opinion that she thinks that that-
Let's just say that it's either her opinion, our opinion, or our opinion, her opinion. So I, I think that that's where we're having a-
If, if it's in her opinion that she thinks that that's her office, then in, in the key's not gonna be given up. Then if someone comes into town hall and they're looking to do business, and that we can't get a birth certificate or a marriage certificate, we're gonna have to just simply say, "The office is closed for the time being, and you're gonna have to come back later." I mean, that's the only, if that's what, I, I don't know. I mean, that's the only I can think. I don't know why it's a big deal to, to make sure we can, you know, if we need to get in, we can get in. And that's why I was saying originally, we just keep the key someplace neutral where we won't have all kinds of problems, but I guess.
Well, I think there's a history that she referenced-
Okay.
Of nobody in particular, I'm not, I don't think Denise has addressed her issue, but I even think prior to that, there's been instances of people going into the office, and again, because the keeper of the records role is the integrity of those records, it's ensuring that nobody's going into that office.
Since we had that meeting, has the town, has she been out in the offices, had, had been locked and no one can get in there? Do you know?
She no longer works Fridays, so the office is closed every Friday. That's all I know of. I actually, I don't go down there every day to see who's here.
Well, I guess we-
Is that posted online, like a, the office schedules?
Are those the hours of the town hall? They're closed every, uh, the town hall's closed on Friday?
No.
So...
She closes, um, May through October-ish for the summer, and Fridays off.
So how much autonomy does that position have to dictate their own hours?
She can set her own hours completely. Although I will say, town meeting set the salary based on thirty-seven hour work week. So the salary is based on a thirty-seven hour, based on a town meeting, um, discussion.
But she doesn't take any other vacation throughout the year. So I think if you looked at the number of days, I don't think it would be inconsistent with that amount of time per week.
So maybe what we should do is just go with the plan we had for the time being and see if it becomes an issue. I mean-
Yeah, Bill, if you wanna review the, the, um, the outline of what the town clerk's position is for an elected official, compared to that.
I guess that, and I'd like to explore the possibilities of, of, of changing that from an elected position to, um, you know, there are a couple of them that-
Yeah, mo- a lot of cities and towns have an appointed town clerk. They're not required to be elected. So that's why the autonomy isn't-
But the town has to vote on it.
Yes. It's a, right, it's a charter, or, we don't have a charter, so it's a bylaw change.
So I never realized that that could be an appointed position.
Yes.
Yeah, same with, um-
I knew the rule.
Highway, yeah.
Yeah.
So I actually think they tried a few years ago, when they tried to do the road commissioner and the town clerk together, and it failed. I'm not sure if it was town meeting or the town ballot. Um, but yeah, so you can have an appointed town clerk.
It was town meeting. I was there. I actually voted against it, but since then, I, I've really had, uh, a much better chance to, um, examine the situation and see how it really, in some cases, it doesn't work for the town. And, and most importantly, it doesn't work for the, for the taxpayers in this town.
And the only thing that I will say, if, and maybe I'm wrong by saying this, but if that office, i- it appears like the person doesn't want unlocked the door because they don't trust the people. I, I, that's the only thing I, that I have a bother with. It, it, if you work with people, you work in the same building, you would think everyone would trust everyone, they can go in and do whatever. So there's gotta be a trust issue somewhere that, that's why the, no one can go in there. That's, that's my opinion of the whole thing.
Well, that's, I'm not saying no one can go in there.
Well, I'm just saying they don't want someone in there or whatever, but I don't know.
So let's, um, let's do this. Bill, let me know if you wanna put this on an agenda item in the future for a revisit after you've done some kind of comparison on it. Cause I think that's what the issue is, is, you know, one, one bylaw, one segment says this, you write something that says something else. So really, where does it fall?
I think the issue too is, is about, um, accountability a- and, um, you know, being responsible to, to somebody. I mean, uh, right now, there, there's certain positions that seem to be completely autonomous. They, um, they're only answerable to the voters every so many years, and really answerable to no one in between. It, it's, it leaves, it leaves, um, it leaves us sometimes in a difficult position when we're being approached by, uh, taxpayers out in the street and being asked questions. And, um, I, I frankly have no answers because we, we don't have any, any control whatsoever over the, over the individuals, or the departments.
Right.
Um, and it's a source of tremendous frustration, um, for the folks I talk to. And I, I, I think if that were to brought up today, I think that would, it would, might be turned out to be a different vote.
Well, I know this, I, I know you, you haven't been in town that long, Bill, but this has been fried, uh, a few times in the past, where they, they tried to make some of the, uh, elected positions appointed. And, uh, I can remember probably three times, and it was turned down, and, uh, all three times. And, uh, one of the, it, it sticks in my mind at a, at a candidate's night where they had brought this up, and they said that, uh, the person that was a proponent of changing it to, from, um, to an appointed position from elected. And they said, "Well, the townspeople don't really know who the best people are for some of these positions." And the person snapped back and they said, "Well, why is it that they don't, that they don't know who is good in these positions, but yet those dumb voters have enough smarts to put the right people in as selectmen?" And, and that was brought up, and that was probably what defeated it. Uh, it was, it was a crazy argument. But, uh, and, and I'll go, uh, and, and why stop, why stop there? Cemetery, uh, cemetery department, water department, water, water board, uh, elected light commissioners, uh, uh, road commissioner, uh, library trustees, uh, I'll keep on going. Where do you stop? Uh, because these people are responsible to, to the voters, some of them on an annual basis, and in, in no cases, uh, longer than three years. And, uh, if, if, if we're, if we're worried about that part of it, when, when we were talking about some of these, uh, appointed positions, and I, I had brought it up, uh, it seems like two years ago now, is that I would get in complaints that they, the voters were saying, "Hey, uh, if, if we don't like the way somebody is, is working in a, uh, in an elected position, we can vote them out of office at the next election." But some of these people on appointed boards and committees, how do we get rid of them? Because they're appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And, uh, so the, the voters are frustrated because, not because of the people that are in elected positions, they're upon some, because of some of these people that are in appointed positions that have been there for, for a good many years. And, uh, they're, they're entrenched there. And, uh, you know, we, gee, we're, we're just, uh, this, this last election that we had, there were, if I remember correctly, there was two offices, uh, that we weren't able to get anybody to run for election. Uh, one of them was the, was the water board, and for the life of me, I can't think of the other one.
Planning board.
The zoning board.
Planning board.
Plan, I'm sorry, thank you, planning board. And, uh, and actually, the, uh, the tree warden, uh, well, uh, he, he won, he won because of writing books. Uh, so, uh, I, I, I think that this has been tried before. The voters didn't want the appointed position because it was voted down. And then you say, "Well, maybe times have changed." Well, okay, maybe, maybe times have changed, and maybe some of the, uh, elected positions, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, some of the appointed positions, maybe they wanna change that and make them elected so that they can, uh, vote these people out of office. If, no, I, I'm not gonna pick on Mike. Yes, I am. But, uh, if Mike's on, uh, and I'm gonna bring up, uh, conservation commission. Well, who says that we, that, that the conservation commission, if they don't like what Mike is doing and the others, well, let's get a petition and, and get the conservation commission a- as an elected position. Probably can't do that, but-
Yeah, they can. They can do a petition for anything, where people have-
Well, he was ready to jump out, so ours, probably can't do it. But you, you get my point. And, uh, how many times do we as voters in the country, when things get, get voted down, they get voted down, they get voted down, and then somebody wants to, well, they come back and they wanna pass it. And election after election, they try to, they, they try to get it passed. And, uh, this is, this is, uh, a history in the town. They turned them down before, uh, so the town, to me, the town people spoke it probably three times. So, uh, that, that's all.
So, yeah, I, I, and I agree with you, and where would I stop? I wouldn't stop anywhere. And, 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 uh, I remember the last election, and I, I, I voted against it myself, uh, but now that I understand the situation better and I have a much better perspective, and I think the electorate has a much better perspective, um, things change. Uh, a- and just because something is defeated doesn't mean you stop. Doesn't mean you quit. You, uh, if you feel you're right, you just keep going.
And, and the townspeople spoke loud and clear in the last election on, on the marijuana. They don't want it. It was fifty-nine to forty, I believe.
I don't know if seven hundred and fifty-five people really constitute loud and clear in the town of sixty-five hundred.
Well-
Uh, that's not even, I don't know what that is.
And again, that was non-binding. It's non-binding. It's non-binding. We already talked about this. You're out of order.
Maybe not enough people come in.
You're out of order. Bill, would you like to have that as an agenda item going forward?
Certainly. I think it's, it, 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 it deserves discussion.
Alright. Probably not the tenth, maybe not the twenty-fourth, but let's talk about what-
I'm not asking for it next meeting. I, I'm just saying that I, I think it's, you know, something that's, that should be debated.
Going through the check, can I make a point to Ed's comment?
Yeah.
Um, what Ed was saying was, in, I think a lot of this is to do with the, the PR. You need the PR. You gotta, anything you gotta talk about it before though. It's a lot of times people don't talk about the stuff, they don't get the information out there. And, and, and a lot of times people get in the voter box, they don't understand what they're doing. So, one way or another, it could be pro Bill or, or, you know, or defeat Ed, but I think a lot of it is conversation ahead of time. Selling it, e- e- explaining it, you know what I'm trying to say? That's a lot of it in the beginning. And, and Ed's right. I mean, one time, it, it, it almost passed, but not by much. But on the same token, I think if it was talked about better on the pro side, it would have been different. I think the con side did a better job at defeating it, and it got defeated, so.
Well, the issue with that is actually using facts and not made up data too, so.
Yeah, right.
But I agree, you know, having a discussion beforehand so everyone knows the pros and the cons about it would deliberate a better response.
Right, right.
Alright, so are you, are you all set with Old Business?
Um, uh- Just one more item, and that's just going back to the library director. We asked Denise to get us some data. Can you help me understand what the data I'm looking at?
Oh.
This Merrimack market data.
Yes, so I, um-
Specifically looking at the line of library director, which is line forty here.
Yes, so there are a couple. I had reached out to some of our surrounding towns, um, and the town of Merrimack provided me. They actually just hired a consulting company to do a full salary survey. So this is their data.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, so, um, you can see the communities that they surveyed, Merrimack, um, obviously Foxborough, Oxford, Essex, Georgetown, Groveland, Ipswich, Hamilton, Middleton, Newbury, Rowley, Salisbury, Topfield, and Wyndham, uh, for a whole bunch of their positions. They actually, like I said, did a complete comprehensive salary survey. Um, so their library director is item number forty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it shows where Merrimack is, what the actual is, and then the average across the board of where the towns are paying.
Is that an hourly rate?
Yes.
So as far as an hourly rate, we fit pretty much in the middle. I mean, I see Hamilton is, is, is far below us. Uh, Georgetown is below us. Merrimack actually pays below us with that Brinwood Library. They got, Rowley pays below us.
Right. So I will, so here is another survey that was done, that the information I got today, if you want to pass those down. Um, I will say, um, Merrimack, they actually just hired a new director that's starting July first. Um, in her experience, they received an overwhelming number of resumes. So she feels that the salary that they're at, which is thirty-one oh eight, will be the FY eighteen rate. Um, she feels it was right on point because they were not hurting for resumes there. Um, so I just thought, it was brought up at the last meeting, so they had this information. It was current. Um, I just thought I would forward it along to you all.
And I would add to that, that, um, when I was on the library trustees about three or four years ago, our salary was lower. We have increased it. I would say, I think it was fifty-five at that time.
I think so. I mean, I think we increased it two or three years ago.
Yeah, so I think we have steadily increased it. I think it's getting better. And I, I agree with Bill that it's in the middle. When you look at the other towns, we're not the bottom, and we're not the top.
Which is pretty much, um, if you'll recall during the budget season, that's really where we are with most of our positions. We were at the, um, middle point. We weren't at the low end, we weren't at the high end, um, when Selectman McDonald had asked me to do a salary survey of all the union positions. So it does sort of fall in line to where we are paying other town employees.
Right. So what I'm driving at is I, I've heard the excuse that it's salary that is creating this tremendous turnover. We've had quite a bit of turnover in that, in that position, so it's clearly not salary that is causing the turnover. There's got to be, there has to be another reason.
Well, my point was-
Why we can't retain a qualified library director for more than a few months before they up and vanish, right? It's, it, I'm trying to eliminate, we've got a bunch of variables, and if we eliminate one at the other, you know, eventually we get down to the root cause of why, and then we can address the root cause and try to correct it. So salary is obviously not one of the variables that's, that's causing our problems. So we can eliminate that, and we don't have to talk about it anymore, pretty much, I think.
Well, I think now it's in the middle, but it hasn't always been in the middle. So even just five years ago, it wasn't in the middle.
Right, but the woman we currently, we hired last year, or not too long ago, Miss, uh-
Boyd, Boyd.
Boyd, um, uh, was hired at this current salary, so it's not salary. I mean, the cryptic answer she gave wasn't really, it was difficult to understand, maybe, uh, there's some ulterior motives why she gave such a cryptic answer to why she's leaving, um, but it's always, it's not money.
This person here, Sve? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Jan.
Jan.
I do think she mentioned, and she, it may have been mentioned at the last meeting, or maybe it was Mike after you met with her. Um, for Jan specifically, I think she sees herself as a fixer. Um, she came in and fixed the issues and brought the reports and got the accreditation back. And, um, I think, I think she likes that, and I think she's looking to go elsewhere and fix things, is what I got from her, um, is why she's leaving. I think, I think she's moving, she's moving, she's leaving the state. Um, so there might be several different reasons why. Um, but I think her specifically, it's, I don't think even if we increase the salary, I honestly don't think she would stay, just because there are other factors, I think, with her specifically.
I didn't read half, half of that much until Life is Fine night.
No, but Mike had met with her, and I think she came to the last meeting and made the statement, or someone told, I think it was Mike after.
Yeah, she was moving someplace much nicer.
Yeah, so I think, I think with her, that's the reason she's leaving. I can't speak to others, but I think that's why she is, um, leaving us.
Anything else, Bill?
Nope, uh, well, nope, I'm good.
So you got, uh, follow up, and then, you have anything else you wanted to cover?
To, uh, under Old Business?
Yeah.
I know that we received a message, uh, excuse me, an email regarding the town square, and I'd like to just revisit how we're going to involve members of the community and being part of that.
Yep, um, so I was, actually, I was gonna make a comment on some Old Business. I actually have a meeting set with Senator Tarr's office on July seventeenth. Uh, so from there, we'll get some background information, we'll find out what might be available, and then we'll proceed as, you know, accordingly. So it is something that I am working on. Um, like I said, they, they contacted me to come in on the seventeenth, uh, to talk both about the town square project, possibly, uh, what to do with the gas station and the post office, and then, um, a second meeting, uh, regarding the senior center and what avenues might be available for that.
So is the plan to put together a committee?
Probably. I was gonna wait until after I had that meeting with Senator Tarr's office, so I had some kind of guidelines on which way to go, what the options are, you know, what kind of information we have to move forward with. I don't, don't foresee having a committee set up prior to that. It's gonna do much good. Anything else?
Not under Old Business.
Ed, anything on their Old Business?
No, I don't have anything.
Alright, so correspondence, we have minutes from May thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, just a correction on that. Should read June, June thirteenth.
Oh.
We, we already approved the minutes for May thirteenth, so that, on the correspondence, should be the meeting of June thirteenth.
Good catch. Can you make that adjustment?
Yep.
Good catch. Um, please- Police Department update. We have the town council's opinion on conflict of interest allegations, again, William Dunn did that read. Earth removal permit for water commissioners as voted on June twelfth, twenty seventeen. Survey of town council costs for communities under twelve thousand population. Library director salary conducted by town of Merrimack. Cemetery equipment inventory list, I think, Ed, you requested that. Then we have the water and sewer equipment inventory list. And now we are on to finance director's time.
To be honest, I don't remember what I wanted to talk about, so I think.
End of year stuff?
Yeah, end of year, so at the next meeting, the July tenth meeting, we'll have the last round of transfers to close out the year. As expected, the fire department salaries are over. He paid half of, or the first week of June so far, I think he has three weeks to go. So we're keeping an eye on that to see what kind of funds are going to be needed. A couple of the departments have overspent, but some of them were unforeseen expenses that we knew were coming. But really, we're down to just a handful, so hopefully, when we do our last payroll and payables, that won't change any. Otherwise, yeah, at the end of the year, our revenue's looking good.
When do we get the certified, is it in July?
Free cash?
Yeah, well.
They don't come out until, last year it was February, I think.
Yeah, end of February. Really? Late, 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 late. I thought it was in July.
On the, on the, um, on the fire departments trying to, you know, it's hard to say, you can't go over, because a call's a call.
Yeah.
Have they pulled back on the mutual aid and that kind of stuff?
That I don't know. I did ask the chief to suspend.
I don't, yeah, mutual going out.
Right, that I don't know. I asked him to suspend training for a few weeks, because we couldn't cover the cost of training in addition to the wages for calls. I don't know what else has been done departmentally, I honestly don't.
Well, do you know if we're talking thousands over, hundreds?
No, it will be thousands, right, well, I mean, right now, I think it's seventeen hundred dollars over.
Oh.
And then we have three more weeks to pay, so it could be.
What is a week, right?
Honestly, the month, a full month range is anywhere from fifty-five hundred to seventeen thousand. It really depends on the number of calls, so he is keeping an eye on it. Obviously, there's not much we can do when calls come in, we have to respond, so.
Oh, right.
It is an issue that, you know, I've watched, I've sort of earmarked where there's some money, we have some health insurance money that I'm sort of setting aside to, to deal with some of these. So hopefully, I don't anticipate any issues being over what we have available. We've had a couple departments not happy with my request to not have any discretionary spending. I've asked departments, I did back in May, to really only spend essential items or contractual obligations, because I knew we were gonna have some shortfalls. And a couple departments really aren't happy with that, and wanna just blow up their budget, because it's theirs, and why not spend it?
Can we name those? Is it possible to name those departments?
I can, if you want. One, well, the Board of Health is the biggest one. They want to spend the fifteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars they have left, that's still remaining as of today. But they'd like to spend it all before Friday, so.
On what?
Recycle bins. And I said, to be honest with you, I don't see that that is a necessity to buy before July first. If you could hold out until July first, then you could buy them if you see there is a need for the department. But at ten dollars a recycle bin-ish, I, I, you know, I don't really see that there's a need for quite that many recycle bins.
Are we out of them, do you know?
We don't provide them. So we provide stickers for free that people can put on any receptacle they have, but we don't.
We used to provide them in the past.
We used to provide them, and then that stopped, before I got here, we stopped giving out recycle bins.
Okay.
So I have suggested to one of the Board of Health members, I think it would be helpful if we created a, which most cities and towns have, a recycle bin revolving account, that we charge like five dollars towards the bin. We pay ten, we take back five, and at least we can then build up some money to buy recycle bins, instead of using general fund money. But they wanted to buy them, so right now, we're sort of in a little bit of a going back and forth, trying to figure out what to do with that budget.
So what you're saying in so many words is they requested us next year to cut their budget back. No, really, seriously.
No, I mean, I think, you know, people, a lot of.
People have to be fiscally responsible. They can't just go out and spend it because it's in the budget and they want to. I mean, that's just.
This, you know what happened September twenty-eighth in the federal government, right?
Historically, that's been the case. I mean, I will tell you, historically.
It's awful from a taxpayer's perspective.
The last week of June, packages arrived like crazy, because everyone's trying to blow through their budget. Last year, we did the same thing, we requested people don't spend, because, you know, snow and ice and these unforeseen expenditures that we know we have to cover. So I did give some warning. I do have the right to implement a spending freeze. I actually said I would encourage not to do that, I asked the departments to work with me. The majority of them have been wonderful. They came in, they said this is what money we'll have available, you can take this, you can take that, I don't need this. I think this is some of the difficulty when it comes into like elected, as you mentioned, they're an elected board. And they're, you know, so they reorganized after their May, after the May election, and I think that this is the priority to them. As I said to them, if it's a priority, if it can wait till July first, or it should have been bought, you know, up before now, but to wait till the end of June to suddenly buy all these recycle bins, I just, personally, I don't see it as a necessity for. So that's really the only one that we're sort of going back and forth with, everyone else is either.
But you did close that gap that we had of ninety-something thousand.
Yeah, so the first round of transfers closed the majority of what we have. And now I think we'll be, said, I think I have a couple of accounts that departments have said they're not gonna use, so I know where there's some money, and we do have some excess in the health insurance line. So that should, I'm hoping that will cover everything, and we won't need to, you know, hit every department, but I won't know until the final payrolls come in and bills come in.
Anything else?
So the biggest, the biggest problem we're gonna have is in the wages in the fire, and there's really nothing we can do.
Unless something, right, unless something major happens, I mean, I, you know.
And you can't, if something happens, it happens, I mean, as far as our end of it, but as far as us.
Correct, I mean, right now, right, wages, everyone else contractually and the expense side, unless something happens, a vehicle breaks, or a fire truck breaks, or a police car, or something like that, that we have to fix in the next forties.
Right.
But otherwise, I think the expenses are, are doing okay. It's the salary line items that, and that's really the only one that should be impacted at this point. I think the police, we transferred enough in the last meeting to cover their reserve line, and back, like their dispatch where they had some deficits there. I think they're in good shape still. And like I said, the fire department, we've been watching it, the chief is aware, he came in, he called me as soon as he got his numbers together for the first payroll of June, and unfortunately, it just is what it is with call departments.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right, moving on to selectmen's time, start with Ed, anything for selectmen time?
Yes. I've been getting, getting a lot of complaints on the Route ninety-seven project from about, second and Salem Street, from School Street to the Georgetown line. This is a, this is a encompass our business area up there, business district, so to speak, industrial area. And the, the complaints mostly have been from some of the business owners, about the, about the, the complaints about the dust and the condition of the road. And what I, what I'd like to see is, is an agenda item to see if we could get the state engineer to come in and update us on the time, what the timeframe is on, on the project. I know that it's scheduled to be paved up there, that section, within probably a week, if not to ten days. But the next phase is going to bring us right by the Bagnell School, and it'll, it'll start to get into our residential area. And it, it's certainly unacceptable, the, the dust complaints up there. I just wanna make sure that during the next phase, that they realize at, at the end of, end of August, that school will be, will be starting, and I wanna make sure that it's not gonna impact the Bagnell School. Make sure that they are aware of that, and it, it's taken them a tremendous amount of time on this section that they're on right now. So I, I don't expect the, the road by the Bagnell School to be paved by, by the time that school starts.
Do we know what the, if they're on schedule, or are they behind schedule?
Well, that's, that's another thing. I'd like to see the state engineer come in and give us a timeframe, right?
'Cause I know the crew that did Garden Street was ahead a month and a half or so.
They're, they're flying right now. But I, I think that this project up there, if I'm not mistaken, it was supposed to be done maybe the end of this year?
I believe phase one, yes.
The whole stretch?
I believe it was.
And so, that certainly, and that's all the way to Park Road. There's no way that's gonna get down to Park Road by then, so maybe we can get a, an update from him, how he's gonna control the dust through our residential area. And I don't know if anybody had taken a ride up through there, but the.
They were wetting it down the other day.
Yeah, the other day, they had a truck open.
You know, I feel bad for the poor guy.
They had oil, they had oil on it, yeah.
Every time you drive by, they.
A bad idea to have the guy bring us up to date.
Can we ask them if they would come in, if not the?
Or get an update?
The tenth, or at least a written update of some kind?
I can speak to, I honestly don't know who it would be. I'll talk to Bob and see who he works with.
There's a guy out there every day from the state.
Yeah.
There's a couple of guys.
He has like a Mass Highway shirt.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can talk to Bob.
Well, maybe if Jeff's going by there, if he can ask him who we can reach out to.
Yeah, I'm sure Bob would, I mean, I do know, we did get complaints, uh, two or three weeks ago about Federal Way being impacted, and businesses, they couldn't get back to their location, they couldn't get out. Bob and the police department worked, they went up there and addressed it, because that was, I guess, one of the issues that was discussed in advance, that you cannot impact Federal Way like that.
Right.
To impede our businesses. So I know they rectified at least that for the time being. But I can certainly speak to Bob and see who we need to get in here.
Well, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have the, the state engineer come in and explain.
Yeah, no, I'll have him reach out to them, yes.
You know, and that was another thing that, about the center of the road really wasn't set up so that they could cross the, cross the road into the other lane of traffic and go into the businesses. And that's gonna even be compounded more when they get into the residential area, people want to pull in and out of their driveways. So I, I think we need an update, and how long this is gonna take, if it's gonna extend into the next year, which it certainly looks like it.
Yeah, if we can get that, what's the tenth look like, is it, besides the Bagnell stuff?
That's all we have on there.
If we can get him in here for the tenth, or at least an updated letter before that, and then maybe come in for the tenth, that'll be.
So I just wanna make sure, Ed, so you wanted to get an update at the timeframe and how they plan to control the dust going forward?
Yes, 'cause I'm sure that others here on the board got, got complaints about the, excuse me, about the dust up there.
I know that dust is, you do what you can with the dust, but I'm more concerned about the timeline and the schedule that they have. You know, how much longer are they gonna work on that one section, before they get, get it tarred up?
I, I don't quote me, but I think in the beginning of that whole project, the state had a problem getting this guy going out there, the contractor going on the project, it was delayed getting him going on it, and I think, you know, he's just, that's the way they work, I think they're not fast.
I, I know, maybe, Bill, maybe you know, but when they, when they, maybe Denise knows too, when they were doing the, the pines down here, and all, all the dust that was, was covering some of the houses, seems to me that the, the town had to pay to have some of those houses cleaned.
When I first came here, yes, that, that was happening, and then they were washing it down, and often spraying the dust.
When I went by there last week, they had these oil trucks backed up, and they were, they were putting a layer of oil on the road down, and they were road grating it, but I don't know, like, all we can do is have the guy come in and find out.
Yeah, I mean, just, whatever information you can come and give us, the timeline, what they're doing.
I think the people in the town like to hear what's going on anyway.
Anything else, Ed, for selectmen's time?
I don't know, legit.
Lisa, Lisa?
So, I think within the last few weeks, we have received an email from Superintendent McQueen regarding a presentation that he gave to the town of Merrimack. And I'd like to request that at some point in the future, we put him on the agenda to do something similar to that for us as well.
What was the presentation on?
It had to do with the building.
Of the, the proposed school?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll reach out to see what his summer schedule's like.
Yep, so I actually have a meeting, what, are you going to that on Wednesday, Bill? There's a school building committee meeting on Wednesday, so I can certainly speak to him and see what his availability is.
Any else? Bill, done?
Not, I'm good.
Bill O'Neil?
Had a few things. First is I would like to congratulate the Groveland Cubs, the ITBL major leagues, having made it all the way to the championship series before being defeated by Rowley, congratulations to that team. But congratulations, and a great big shout out to all those young boys and their coaches, and their parents for a, a great season. You've already addressed the water, but let me hammer that point home. Folks, if you have, and I've been hearing a lot of it lately, issues with the water, either it, it, it appears a tea color or not, you know, doesn't follow the two primary conventions of water, odorless and colorless. Please contact the town hall. I don't know of anybody on Facebook that can help you. I don't really think Mark Zuckerberg cares about your water. So do yourselves a favor, please let us know, let the folks that can help you know what the issue is. The sooner the better. If you tell somebody we can, I'm sure, we have an adequate crew that can address the issues, but complaining to your neighbors is not gonna solve the, your problems, and neither is posting on Facebook many, many, many hours after the fact.
May I just add to that? That goes for any issue with the town. So we get complaints that things aren't being handled, and we don't ever know about them. So any, any issue that people are posting on Facebook, please call the town hall department, we can address it if we know about it.
Yeah, Town Crier is not, is probably not the best source to.
We had that water issue come up last year, and the water department came in, and they said, call that office directly.
Right, so there was an issue a few weeks ago that the post apparently got out of control on Facebook. And when it got to me, I went to the water department, who knew nothing about it. They hadn't gotten any phone calls or pictures on Facebook.
They're supposed to be calling the water department.
So as soon as they found out, they went out to look into the situation, but no one ever called here, so that's what started this.
Well, when they came in, they said, call their department, as soon as you have a problem, they'll come out and check it.
And unfortunately, for a, a, a number of, of people, if the situation had been addressed at the time, a number of viable solutions could have been offered at the time to help these folks out. But where we found out about it so late, it was really, pardon the pun, water under the bridge at that point. Street sweepers, at three-thirty in the morning.
Really?
Rattling homes.
Do you know which street?
Murray Salem, that's the area that I'm being told by some of the folks.
Three-thirty?
Yes, yes, they, they, um, believe it or not, I, I understand that, I'm not sure who does it, whether it's a contractor that does it, but if we could not rattle the homes at three-thirty in the morning on a workday, that would be so much appreciated, folks.
On any day. I don't care what day it is.
Well, on Sunday, I'm getting ready to go to church, so it's okay, you can wake me up. Gardner Main Street, I see that project, as Mr. Watson alluded to, Selectman Watson, that, that project is flying, they've almost reached the.
I think they're already down to the Washington Street.
They've gone, yeah, beyond Washington Street, which is nice. Now, if we could just figure out how to make that road safe and passable again, that would be very much appreciated. I, I wanna reiterate again, that is an accident or a fatality waiting to happen. People are constantly crossing the median strip to get off that side of the road, because it, it is just in such horrendous condition.
May I just comment? So I got a, an update from the contractor that's working on that on Friday. They expect to have the tie-in at Washington and install the remaining service completed by July seventh at the latest, hopefully July fifth. And their paving and their punchless items are going to start for between July tenth and July fourteenth. So they plan to do that first paving to bring it up to great, great level.
Bring it even, yeah.
Hopefully by July fourteenth is what they're targeting, and they are on target with what they are identifying. So hopefully, in the next two weeks, that'll be taken care of.
Cool.
And one last thing, it's more of a statement than anything else. I, I want to personally thank Attorney General Jeff Sessions for recognizing that there is a tremendous drug addiction problem in this country. However, I would also implore him to take firm hold of his head between his hands and try to remove it from his buttocks. Medical marijuana is not your issue, Mr. Sessions. It is the opioids that are killing our children, it is the oxycontin, it is the heroin, it is the fentanyl, it is the catenol. So if you want to do all of us a favor, please stop taking money from these giant pharmaceuticals and the alcohol industry. If you did any research at all, you realize that in the twenty-seven states that medical marijuana is, uh, has been approved by the voters, opioid addiction and overdose. opioid addiction and overdoses have declined significantly. Uh, I, 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 I commend you for realizing there's a problem, but I beg you to, um, put your eye, uh, focus on where the need is. It's the, um, it's the big companies that have been lining your pockets with, uh, campaign contributions for years. Um, please, please, please. Our children deserve a better future. Um, concentrate on what's killing them, not what's helping them. Thank you.
Is that it?
I think I said enough for tonight.
Great. So, can we get a motion to adjourn at nine oh two?
Oh, to adjourn.
Oh, to adjourn. Get a second?
Second.
All those are papers. We're out.